Regular council session at 4:00 P.M. and with Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There he is. Does it feel like you just left here?
Yeah. Sign in and out of the seat.
Okay. No public hearing, any, we have no public comments taken. Communications comments, informational items, couple things there. Read some graphs that aren't going to be taken care of. Read light from July, July 1st, 2nd, 3rd. Sounds good.
I will say something about the upteen annual festival three five. You'll notice that base camp or Lee Park is kind of their headquarters and they're going to have the barbecue and stuff there. I think we're really lucky that those people have moved in and they've taken such an interest in the community and are working with a lot of different things. It's worth going out there and, you know, doing whatever we can do for support for them. The lady is also, by the way, a massage therapist because we haven't had one for a while, so yeah.
Is she doing that?
Yeah, she's doing help, although she's advertising a whole lot, but she is a massage therapist and...
Licensed reflexologist.
Thank you. There's something else there that I'm not hitting.
So a hand over barbecue on the 3rd?
Yeah.
Out there and you're all invited, you're also all invited if you want to help them flip burgers and stuff. There you are. At least they were still looking for volunteers to help, so they thought a town counselor would be perfect.
I'm mostly a consumer of those.
Anyway, I think you're doing a great job with our support.
And the part of it is telling us, no open burning. No burning in burn barrels even anymore. Good. Let's see, what else was there?
Oh, I like the idea that... Anyone does notice any of these other houses, if you see something else, we need to be turning that in so that you have an idea of where those are and can help us bring down.
Get, get in as well myself. I made probably a dozen or more phone calls in the last two weeks, five more than that, five twenty. And there's some other letters besides the ones that are in your packet. Anyway, I get pretty good response. Most of the ones that I've identified, except some of them are kind of slow, they're getting taken care of.
Just the tall grass.
Yeah.
I've got two of my names.
Do we have any way for people that really, you know, are elderly or disabled or something to get any help for them doing that at all? Like the community service or something?
I believe that there are people through the senior center that will, you know, just individuals that will volunteer to go help some of them.
So you can, yeah.
I would have them contact the senior center.
Yeah, if they have.
So I just have to give them my name.
Alex Decker does some of that kind of stuff too.
But he, he charges, so I was just thinking of, you know, assistance for people that are low income or something, but anyway, okay.
I'd contact them and see if there isn't help.
See any help, yeah. Okay.
I want to be in the fourth grade and take this summer camp.
Yeah, that sounds like a great thing, that little summer camp with the geology. Fourth Foundation Summer Camp. Geology.
And they're using the town.
They're gonna...
They're gonna start there.
They're gonna, yeah, start there each morning, I believe, at the park, kind of congregate there and then go about their day's activities, come back there. I'll try to make sure Delby doesn't turn the water on.
That might be a good idea. Okay, will we now have the department reports?
I, um, is anybody else concerned about 142 more calls in May? And that's an increase of 59% police calls. And I keep hearing we're having a lot of break-ins and we've even had people trying to get into our house at night.
I think that everything's going out on social media the way it is, that's probably why there is more of an increase of it.
You mean the people that are...
Everybody's been saying on social media, "Report it, report it, report it." So a lot of that stuff goes unreported and now trying to catch up, I think. I thought Travis was gonna be here, but he's probably out on the call.
Somebody's breaking their house while they're out here.
They did pick up a couple of kids on that cap thing, I heard.
That's what I heard too, but that's all I heard.
Okay. So we have the monthly report, please, with no policeman here. And it's got outlays out here for 911. They seem to be busy as usual. Fire department has had some business this month, a little bit. Yes, anything additional?
No, other than you guys were talking about no burning. We do allow, you know, I haven't advertised it or anything, but we do allow like the fire pits in the backyards as long as we can go and inspect them and see that it's a new or a good pit.
I didn't either. They're pretty popular right now.
Yeah, I think they are, as long as everyone that we're allowing to use, we go there and look at it to make sure it's all right. And then they need to call us every time they use it, of course, too.
Oh, they do?
Well, so you don't get a report of smoke and...
Yeah, okay.
Does that also include like charcoal, people who are doing the barbecues or something?
No, not break-ins, just the, you know...
Open fire.
Fire pits or whatever.
Are most people getting wood burning ones or doing the propane?
No, there's a lot of wood burning ones.
Yeah.
And there's a lot more that go on that we're not aware of and we don't get a call on it. I figured better to try and allow and inspect it and give them some tips than to have them do it.
That might be something you could point out, Kurt, that people who are burning, especially in the summer when it's fire dangerous, I need to notify.
And they gotta have a cover on the screen or something, they can't just leave it open.
Yeah. Nothing from Anderson Engineering. Public Works is not here.
Jeff, just so you know, Jeff, is it one of the required trainings for his being Public Works Director is, I think this one is the, I can't remember, this is the wastewater treatment? Or this is the backflow device training, one or the other that he's had. But he's gotta get all those certifications, part of his, yeah, definitely, definitely like wastewater treatment. Kind of gets your day going.
Okay.
Backflow's why you got it.
Just make sure it doesn't backflow.
Yeah, it's preventing backflow.
Anyway, I just want to comment that both Jeff and Travis are working hard at getting their, you know, their training requirements and certifications that we need for them to have as police chief and as, as a public works director. Of course Travis has got a ways to go, you know, his is, he doesn't get incremental achievement. He gets, he goes to school and gets some classes done and we'll have some other trainings that he'll have to do too as we go along. But he's working at it, making progress. And our officer, I didn't, I didn't see it in his report, but our officer Mike Patterson has said the academy is doing very well.
Good.
And so, so he's still got, until mid-August, I can't remember the exact date to graduation.
To be on duty for Labor Day?
He's...
That's baptism by fire.
Yeah, he should be back, as I recall, he'd be here about two weeks before Labor Day, so.
What a training period, Labor Day.
Oh, no kidding.
Seriously.
The grocery store at Thornton's building on your report, I am not up on that.
Okay, well, there's, there has been a proposal. Mike Beeson has been, he has been working with some acquaintances of his or maybe people that he's had hired, looking at the possibility of establishing what he termed a neighborhood market at the old Thornton's drugstore. Mike Moore and I attended probably the first meeting that he had at the coffee shop about his interest in doing that. And then he had several other small group meetings. And then I do know that he was at the Lions, what, the week, or month, last month, although I missed that particular meeting. Was talking about his proposal to, to have a market there at that now. I heard just this week that maybe that is, you know, maybe he's hit a couple of bumps in the road with that, but I don't know that for a fact.
I believe he's looking for investors also.
Yeah, he was looking for, and he was talking about maybe having local investors, that people being able to buy memberships or even buy stock of some kind or other and ownership into the, into it. So I think he really hasn't kept me up to date, I haven't needed to know, I guess, but, but there is, there is some work going on there with regards to that.
I noticed starting new neighbors and running a new business already.
Here, yeah.
Yeah. Couldn't believe it.
Hank, Hank or his daughter Stacy Alderson's state, you know, Razor's Edge moved from the other corner to this one.
Yeah, and it seems that the Red Rock is, they're stripping the roof on it.
Are they?
Did somebody buy it?
Yeah, quite a long time ago. Looks like they're gonna modernize it, but I bet they cut out the block, you know, both the windows for air conditioner, heater units and other things. Believe it's the owners of the Best Western.
I know, I saw people up on the roof here a month or so ago and they were measuring and doing, and I haven't seen anything, but that's good to know that they're, that they're doing that. Is it that they are planning on using that, somebody said they were planning on using that with Red Rock King and his, or maybe the 42nd Street living quarters or something?
I have...
Is that just rumor?
I used to assume they were going to open another motel, I don't know.
It'd be nice to have one that's updated, that thing was pretty bad.
Yeah.
Will be good for construction if they do a little kitchenette and some of those people that have to stay, you know, and work here all week, go home on weekends, so. Anything else to add to your report, Ray?
Uh, just a minute.
It's a long one.
Yeah, you know, I'm running out of time, I have a lot to say. No, I don't think so.
Okay. The consent calendar, we have financials and the May 24th regular session minutes. Any comments or corrections on that? The last one, have a motion to approve?
Have a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Is it second?
Second.
We have a motion in second to approve the consent counter as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. Good minutes. Mayor, council, manager updates. I did attend the DEQ meeting last week, Ray was there and Amy and Mike Warren. Not particularly great news, but...
No, almost everybody, wasn't it?
Chris Charles was there too.
Oh, Chris Charles was there, I forgot.
I was wearing many hats.
He was, he was sitting up front, you know, not in the peanut gallery with us.
Took a comfy seat.
Yeah. And then, just a reminder, Daily Days, and they'll have the thing uptown in the afternoon, the festivities. And Saturday market will be open from 1:00 to 5:00, in the, it's either 1:00 to 5:00 or 1:00 to 4:00 in the town parking lot. They won't be at the hospital this year, but if you're interested in any of that, so. Sharon?
I've been busy with some aspects of Daily Days. This morning I handed out parts of the answers to the quiz, it's in the, what is it called, Lowdown, or what is that thing?
Wise Buys.
Wise Buys.
The Wise Buys has the copy of the quiz and then the book, the different stores where those clues are presented. So we've got that going, we're working at the gathering place to get, get together a lot of daily memorabilia for Bernard. We've got a lot of old photos, we've got posters, we've got some, we actually have his watch and his hat that we're going to have on display and do some things like that. Also, we will have for sale the, what do I want to call it? It's a disc with, it's a copper disc with Dave's picture medallion. And those would be for sale, so if you had a child or if you were a daily fund recipient, those are kind of nice to have. We have one in our family, we just put all the names on the back because they're a hundred dollars apiece, so, yeah, I think we could afford them with all that scholarship thing. Chamber's been meeting every two weeks, we've got some things we have to hammer out. We've done some changing in responsibilities between the lady that's working in the office and the Tullys to clear her up for some other kinds of things she wants to do. I see that there's another U-Pick trying to be scheduled in July, we haven't had a U-Pick meeting, I think maybe in six months because they can't get a coroner to show up. So hopefully that senior citizen, I think, is next week.
Ray?
The last Monday, the 1st of Wednesday of every month, the Gun Club Hall, they're meeting over at Eagles Lodge. I went to that, everybody that wanted to have a skeet shooter or something up there, none of them showed up, so that figures. But they are, they did request that, and I talked to Ray about it, to blank the road down to the gun range because it's so rough. And they're planning on putting in a, a big metal container up there so they can keep all their targets instead of having their targets at different people's houses and stuff like that. So they can store that stuff and they have some other stuff to put in there and so on. It was a pretty good meeting.
Red Rock for town planning and county plan will be meeting again on this coming Tuesday, so we can return. It was a continuation of there, but it has been closed, so hopefully we'll have deliberation and decision and get pushed onto this.
Next Tuesday at seven?
I believe it's at seven.
It's at seven, yeah, this one is.
And then, so hopefully we'll be good to see that at the town council office.
It's at the...
Yeah, it's at the Board of Commissioners meeting room at the courthouse. Also attended the chip meeting at the hospital. Got a good report from Town Mayor Norris. The others still are there, so. Always some good things going on with that. Those who are concerned about the health of our community can continue to speak with her, but have nothing further to put on this.
Okay.
The emergency meeting that was scheduled last week was kind of canceled because of an emergency, so. If you could have gone off, just too much.
Oh, this was the earthquake preparedness cascade, the rising or whatever.
Yeah, it was, there was a group, it was to meet up at the search and rescue 140. And I went out there and there was quite a group out there, but it just never materialized because there was another greater urgency, so. But there is a meeting tomorrow of the emergency services and that will be at 2:00. And I probably am going to be, if we were tied up, I have here, so I may have to go and wait to that, but.
Right.
At 2:00?
I believe at 2:00, Emergency Services building.
Oh, okay.
That's all I have there.
Okay, thank you. Ray, anything else to add?
Already mentioned Daily Days at the hospital and downtown.
Yeah, I was just thinking of that.
10:00, I believe, it starts at the health fair portion at the hospital. I'm gonna be downtown a part of it, but I'm going to have some air quality stuff down there, some manaus and some stuff that when I have to leave, people can still pick up.
There's quite a slate of activities, I'm very impressed with the Lakeview partnership, the community partners that have put this together.
Ann Logan has actually been kind of the head of this particular project and she's done an excellent job, really worked hard to try to bring, bring it together. And I, you know, I just know that sometimes things aren't as wonderfully successful the first year out as you would like for them to be. But I hope everybody remains optimistic and keeps doing it because I really think that this is a piece of our heritage that there's a, if we just persevere, that we can build a event around Dr. Davis. We just gotta keep trying.
Yep.
The other thing that I just, as an update, I just wanted to mention that we, we will have a special council meeting next Tuesday at 4:00. And at the moment at least, since we're having a meeting, there may be other things, but at the moment at least, the purpose of the meeting is to have your budget hearing, yeah? Which is only, you know, nobody usually appears here, but we still have to have it, so. That'll be next Tuesday, then we'll still have our regular council meeting on the 28th, which is again Tuesday at 4:00. And I don't know, we may have a work session prior to that one. We'll, we'll see what things come up.
Tuesday at 4:00 P.M.?
Next Tuesday, the 21st, 4:00 P.M. for the budget hearing. And then the following Tuesday, of course, is your regular second meeting of the month.
Old business, we have none, new business, we have a request for temporary street closure during Dr. Daily Days. The hospital's requesting part of 7th Street be blocked off and G Street at the corner of 6th Street, which I think is the way they have done it every year.
It's just that road.
Right, the little connecting street and then the 7th Street just parked, I think, from, almost to the hospital, but a parking lot there, so.
We need a motion for that?
We need a motion to approve the street closure for Daily Days.
I move that we grant the request for temporary street closure during annual Dr. Daily Days Health Fair as requested by the hospital.
Second?
I'll second that one.
We have a motion on the second to approve the request for a street closure for Daily Days. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? We'll be first. All right. Next item is the sewer and water extension agreement with Red Rock.
Mayor, council, if I may, I, I am having some further discussions with Red Rock with regards to this agreement. And I don't think I'm really ready for you to take action on it today, so I'd like to postpone that. That could be on your meeting of the 21st or even the 28th, but I really would rather, you've got a copy of it, you need to read it and be familiar with it. It's a fairly involved, uh...
Legalese John Hill, right?
I have been, I played very little, little role in the writing.
Very little, I would.
Yeah, I do tend to be a little less verbose of this.
That's a tough one to get through, even for me.
Yeah.
Well, I read it too and I was, you know, not quite understanding everything.
You do have it in your packet and I do, it will be coming to you.
Also, we didn't give you anything on Exhibit A.
That's another reason, I always have stuff on my exhibits. More evidence, I was not the author of it.
What was Exhibit A supposed to be?
I mean, it's supposed to be the budget.
Oh, okay.
The budget for the sewer extension and...
I will make sure.
As she was saying.
I have that actually in my file and it's, it's 55 plus 97 and 5, I think, 100, 260.
155.
155 plus 97, 5, so whatever that adds up to is what the budget is.
So, and we take out a loan and then they guarantee it, or, I read some notes on that.
Yes. This project is just, you know, to refresh your memory, it's to build water sewer main extensions in Catteras Road from Lake Burey Mix up to where Red Rock driveway or approach will be to their property. I remind you that typically developers pay for water sewer extensions as part of our development ordinance, that's, that's the way those things happen. And this agreement is trying to make sure that that is how this ends up happening. However, because of the funding source being state money, we're the only ones, the town is the only ones eligible to receive special public works funds in the form of grants and a loan. Red Rock is going to repay the loan right away. The grant funds are not, again, they're grant funds, so they don't have to be repaid so long as Red Rock complies with the terms of the grant. Which is that the 31 jobs that they are going to create at their facility because of this project have to be maintained for four quarters after the operation, after the project begins operation. And, and, so that's what the terms of the agreement are. So if we read through it, understand it, we'll probably have another discussion about it. Yeah, we're just trying to develop something creative, some mechanism whereby if Red Rock doesn't fulfill their commitment, and that was the commitment that gave us the grant monies. And they don't fulfill that commitment, so that we're liable to repay the, we, the town, liable to repay the grant monies. Somehow that liability has to channel back to Red Rock. Red Rock doesn't do what they're supposed to, in real life, that probably means financially they can't do what they're supposed to. And so the town would be on the hook for repaying the grant monies, so that's the issue. So we're having some further discussions, we're very met part of the discussions.
And do we start any of this until we see them half the building up or something?
Good question.
I mean, I just remember, we've had some snake oil salesmen before.
Somewhere in this agreement, it says that during, that Red Rock actually has six months from whenever we agree to this to give us the notice to go ahead with the project. Because they still are working on finalizing their financing packages and so forth, so they don't want us to start the project yet. But once we've reached an agreement with this, then we, there's some time that's going to be needed to make the application to the state of Oregon for these funds. And so, once, and again, Red Rock is agreeing to any fees and, and interest and any costs of this project, you know, in securing the funds and so forth. So once this agreement would be signed, approved by you guys and by Red Rock, that would be then when we would make application for the funds. And then the funds would be sitting there waiting for the day when Red Rock says, "This project's going, we need, we need to build the water sewer lines." And that could be six months from now.
Could you require them to put like an advanced deposit down or something like this? And I'm only half joking about that because...
No, they, we have to have some guarantee.
We have to have some guaranteeing, so I would think that if they put a deposit to be used only to pay for that.
So I want to, what I want to do, Sharon, is, you know, we're kind of getting into, you know, property negotiations here, this, and it's probably into areas that maybe belongs in executive session. So I, I think, I wanted you to be aware of, of the agreement. You've kind of been pointed towards where the work still needs to be done and we'll continue to try to resolve that. And instead of having a full council negotiation, we'll try to bring a finished agreement.
Okay. So that item will be tabled until further notice?
Oh, I've got one other thing, back before I was doing my updates, I had my elbow on top of it and forgot.
Okay.
Can I, may I back up?
Yes, you can.
Manager update. Yeah, just take a second. Every other year, League of Oregon cities ask cities to prioritize their legislative calendar coming up for the next, for the next 2017 legislative session. And so here is the packet of information for you to look at. I've got the master copy here, so at a future work session, I suggested at the bottom of the letter, maybe July 12th, that's plenty of time, it needs to be in by the 22nd. That we have a discussion about what the council's four top priorities are within this, all this list of, of items that they have been working on or have been brought to their attention. That's all listed, enjoy that as you read the Red Rock agreement, this will be for the light.
Well, very good. Okay, any, any additional? Oh, yes, Mr. Utlens?
Grand Ole Mary Council, I was not here when we read the nine-one report, but I wanted to give you the update.
Yes.
Nine-one is moving pretty fast, we just, uh, we're upgrading our telephone system as well as our mapping system. We chose a vendor, it's called Airbus Space and, uh, anyway, it's a product called Vista Maps and will give us a new tool. When they call nine-one-one, it'll plot your distance, give us an area of confidence, uh, we'll have, uh, we'll have everywhere from, you know, your longitude, latitude to UTM's, which is a very more finite, down to a more pinpoint location. Also, we've chosen a vendor for a telephone, which is Positron, and this all should be starting to come in, uh, probably in the next six months, you know, we'll have a cut over, basically throw our old nine-one equipment away.
Again?
And, yeah, it was, it was only two hundred thousand last year, or four years ago, it should be a little bit more. We had a couple of site surveys from the different vendors, and we found some issues, mostly electrical zip cords, stuff like that. Anyway, uh, those will all be corrected. And, uh, we're also working really hard at getting our TAD, which is computer aided dispatch, we're bringing that up to, uh, the next, uh, phase. And, uh, also working to have, it's called mobile data terminals in the police vehicles, so they can run license plates, they can...
Oh, great.
Run people, they can, uh, do their reports, and so they can be out more in the community that's stuck and doing paperwork. So, we've got a lot of stuff going.
So, they'll be able to, you know, verbally request the, uh, information from their...
Oh, they just sit there in their computer.
They'll have a computer, okay, so we'll be able to...
And then they can run, Sheriff's Office is already doing that, they can access the world from, from that to, and then dispatch, we can send messages back and forth, computer to computer without using the radio.
Ah.
We can send pictures.
That'll all affect trials.
Right, and we can...
People won't like it for that.
Well, yeah, and then we also, uh, we're working with the Vista Maps from Airbus, uh, Space and Defense, uh, we'll also be able to send mapping. So, if we get a call, we can send a map as well and plot it and then...
Great.
Also get driving directions and stuff, which will help fire. Fire's not too bad, cause you just follow the smoke, but when it comes to police and ambulance, it's difficult, especially at three o'clock in the morning. So, we're moving forward, um, it's probably gonna be some growing pains, we'll be the last in the state, I opted to go, be the last in the state. Hopefully all the bugs are worked out, usually they bring a team of twelve or so people down and do the cataloging.
The phone system and all that stuff is all part of, it's paid for with nine-one-one tax, but it's part of the set side, it's the state of Oregon keeps, and then they do these kinds of technology upgrades around the state.
Yeah.
The police, you were, all back in our budget meeting, we discussed, you know, there's some additional money in the police budget this next year for, for a technology upgrades and, you know, they'll say you can, like, that, and that, that information is what that's all about.
Cause right now, we can't, uh, we have like two point one and the county has three oh. So, when they arrest someone, they have to go over there, book them, fill all the paperwork out, blah, 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 come back to the station and redo it again. Where with, with our upgrade, what's put in there, it automatically flows into the records.
Right.
Yeah, so, it's, it's exciting times.
It will be great enough, yeah.
It'll love to be, uh, system peers.
Learn how to use it for training. Janine, did you have anything you wanted?
I asked her to come for our executive session portion.
Oh, are we having...
Yes, you are.
Okay.
Part of that, though.
Any other business? Okay, we will adjourn, or, well, adjourn our regular session then at, uh, four thirty-five and we...